We'll go ahead and call our nightly meeting of the Allegheny County Board of Commissioners, March the 7th to order. Appreciate everybody coming out. If we would, let's all stand for the pledge followed by...
Moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Spare his for moment of silence, please. And on the agenda tonight, four items. Survey property, lead paint, as best as survey and county manager be able to spend up to 25,000 in getting these tests done. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Got a motion, second. All in favor? Five A. First off, get it all the minutes for 221, pages one through five. I trust everybody has looked over that. If you have any questions or comments, here and now, need a motion to approve.
Moved.
Motion is second in discussion. It's not all in favor. Five A. Next on the agenda is public comment. If anyone wishes to make any comments at this time, please come forward. If there's no movement, we'll close the public comment section. Next up, presentation of the board. Dr. Chad Beasley. New high school conversation.
Good, good. All right. I appreciate you guys giving me a chance to come to this talk with you these few minutes. The, a few weeks ago, we talked about the needs based grant capital application process. And at that time, when I spoke to you, the guidelines for that was a four to one match. Four, four and one coming from the commissioners. But since then, the application process has changed. And so, we've been moving forward with this process. And Allegheny County is fortunate enough to be a no-match county. So, really what I'm here tonight is ask for your support of this project. I've been working with Architect already. This is kind of just a rendition of what, it's just a plan, it's just a thought, but it's just kind of a rendition of where we're at right now. They brought a drone up last week and did some drone work and they're putting some sketches together. But this is basically our idea, our concept of what Allegheny High School could look like in the future. And so, it's, we're going, we're going to propose, we think, I'm meeting again in the morning with a gentleman. We're going to ask for between 47, 48 million dollars. We're just trying to finish up the square footage on it. It's a long way to go, but the application is due by the 15th of this month. So, that's why we're going to get it finished up tomorrow. And really what I need from, from the commissioners is the support for you guys. And Bill, I'll need your signature on the application if you guys are willing to do that. But if you'd like to, I just kind of, I'll tell you a little bit about it. I'll just walk over here. I don't know if you still hear me. But this currently is the wing, the newest wing. It's where the classroom, the hangar. We want to leave there. It's pretty good shape. Still had some earthquake damage, some cracks and some... Keep that gym and rooms over here. This is the, this is the gym area right now with the locker rooms back here. But we want to keep this big. Renovate these classrooms. Right here is all new classrooms, two-story, two-story classrooms. Walkway, this tunnel, whatever you want to call it, attaches to those buildings, goes in those side doors when you go up to the gym right now. Also, new front entrance. All of our offices in front. We'd have all of our guidance counselors down there, data manager. Everybody will be accessible. Right here is a brand-new state-of-the-art gym. Got a whole more folks, updated, updated. Parking for the gym. Now, currently, all that would come out and turn into lobby, classrooms. New areas, parts up here. Like about this. Got any door. Old gym. That, we want to keep that. One, two, for the community. It's a great opportunity for the community to have that. Back here would be a new career action center. Also, would attach back at this gym. Open areas, some mechanic. As the safety, all that's in. It's, we've got all our facilities, athletic facilities here, here, here. Parking changes just a little bit. We still have 90 spaces in front of the school. With, with what we had, it's kind of going. It's just an opportunity we can. We can get up to 50 million dollars, you know. Don't be greedy enough. You know, that's the grand first. You know. For the earthquake damage that we had, we fixed our major problems, the bus, you know. Roof problems. We didn't put a flat roof on this, we put a slanted roof on. Now, not doing very. I just want to share it with you. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not here asking for money tonight. I'm just here asking for support, move forward with this project. And just see if you had any questions or thoughts, comments, or...
The upper right hand up there on the back. Now, that, that's going to be the new ag.
Yeah, this will be the new green chat squats.
Okay, okay.
This is the barn. You don't have a barn back in mine already. That's the, he's the greenhouse will be there. Yeah. We're just going to tear the old facility down. I mean, it's... It really got hit pretty good with the earthquake. And, you know, the storage building we have back there that's wrapped in wood siding, it's either got to be torn down or replaced or fixed. So, it's just an opportunity to, you know, have a brand-new facility that would really benefit the community and the students and the students in the future. I mean, it's, you know.
I'm glad to see you get away from flat roofs.
Well, I mean, that, that used to be the way they built them. So, you know, it's, yeah, yeah. They sent me two designs, one with the flat roof and one with this roof. I said, you can get rid of that other one. So, but, yeah, it's... Any questions?
There are several questions. One is, when will you start?
When will I start? We, we will start when we have the money. That's, that's all I can tell you. So, you know, April 1st is when they will grant, we'll, we'll know if we've received a grant or not. And so, I think we have, it's either 90 or 120 days to break ground. So, it's, it's a quick process. We've got to put a planning committee together. We've got to bring the students together and staff together. We've got a plan, you know. None of these rooms have a plan right now. We don't know where the science area will be. We don't know where the math area, the language arts, you know, all that. It, it, it's a lot of work in a, in a short amount of time. But, but we can, we can break ground with, with a dump truck loaded dirt, you know. I mean, that's, that's breaking ground. So...
How long do you think it'd take to complete once you start?
Architect thinks it'll take about three years.
Three years?
Yeah.
And that should last the high school for 40 or 50 years?
At least another 40 or 50 years. You know, this, the building we have there now is 55 years old. And has a lot of issues with it right now. You know, it's, this would, this would update our technology needs, our electrical needs. You know, we're having, we're having cracks and pipes. Anytime we have a little tremor, we're having to fix those types of things. So, yeah, it's, it's really needed. It's really needed.
I know this is just a...
Just a plan. Yeah, it's nothing.
Hardest conception right now.
Yeah, that's it.
Do, well, I don't know. I was just going to ask about this new gym. Is it going to be a real high ceiling?
Yes, real high ceiling, okay. Extra bleachers in there. You know, if you, if you... If you're in, if you're in this area, this gym, and you step back in that locker room, which is about the size of an oversized bathroom, we're not going to small, okay? We want to have, we want to have a facility that will, that will fit everybody's needs, you know.
I was just wondering if it was going to meet the volleyball requirements.
It'll meet every requirement. Every requirement. Yes, it will. It will.
I think it's a great plan.
I do too.
Well, like I said...
Just for information, what's the first building you would build? I mean, you said...
First one we would build?
Three-year estate.
Start here. Start right here. Start in the parking lot before we start at, yeah. That built, get students in that building. And, and while, while, while this is being built, then we can attach the walkway across there. We can renovate that. We can learn to serve a lot of students in this area right here, you know.
They can get from anywhere in the, in the building to any other part of the building through not have to go outside.
That's right.
The corridors.
Once it's built. Yeah, once it's built. Yeah. Yeah.
That's a good plan to me. What's the board's thoughts?
My...
Me too.
Can you come by the office sometime this bill and, and...
Try to tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be great. Yeah, I, I've got a gentleman coming about 11:00 and we're going to, we're going to finish it up. So, we can come tomorrow. I can print off the application. The signature page is, is the last page for, for you and the school board chairs.
Be down here tomorrow and be back Friday to the budget thing. So...
Okay.
Still have a question, please.
So, when you say we're a no-match county, that means, just for the public's information, that there's no new taxes, there's no, this is a, this is a grant given to the county?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a grant given to the county. It sure is. Yeah. Yeah. You can, you can go on DPI's website and look up needs, needs-based capital grants. And it'll be two, two blue lines headings there. One of, one of, one's the application process and the other one is the match process. So, you'll see some counties have a 10% match, some have a 20% match. Allegheny County, a zero match. So...
This, with that money, also go to furnishings?
Yes, all of it. Yeah. Yeah. If we're going to do it, we need to do it right. I don't like to do things halfway.
Certainly so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Certainly appreciate what you've done and working all this through and making it all come together.
Well, I, I hope it comes together. We'll, we'll find out. And while I'm here, I would do, I want to, I will mention one other thing. When you see those athletic facilities, you got a commissioner, I don't know if you guys know this, but Mark Evans reached out to a gentleman down in Raleigh. And we received a 2.25 million grant in this last budget to upgrade our athletic facilities. And so, we are in the process, we're getting bids. We've got contractors every day on our campus right now. And so, hopefully within the next year, year and a half, you'll see a new, a new football field with astroturf on it, a rubberized track, expanded track, see new, new baseball bleachers, softball bleachers, new lights on the softball field, indoor hitting facility for the ladies. We're going to finally fix those tennis courts and put some lights on it. And that gym right now is, is, it's on its last leg as far as floors goes. We can't sand it anymore. And the bleachers need to be replaced. And then, we're going to fix the middle school softball field down there as well. And, and a couple of other little smaller projects. So, we, we're moving forward.
Would you be interested in an earthquake-damaged unusable pool?
Well, I'll tell you what. We would love to see that filled in and that building down and that turned into a parking lot for our faculty. That's what we'd love to see, if that's possible. But, you know, that's not our property. That's your property. And it just kind of runs right through the middle of ours. But, you know, if that was the case, we could upkeep it. You know, right now, we share mowing duties and all that. So, you know, yeah. I'd, I'd love to, if you guys want to talk about that, that's a, it's a good opportunity.
We got a committee that's going to be looking into that. So...
I mean...
I was just kidding.
Yeah, that's good.
No, but I mean, you know, you may have plans for it. I don't know. But, you know, it's, it's not being, it's, it's...
It's time to turn into something.
It's going downhill, it's going downhill real quick, you know. Yeah. But, yeah, it's, you're going to have to do something with it. But, and the park, the parking, the parking for it isn't, it is not in good shape right now. You know, that parking lot needs to be fixed. So...
Other questions? Glad to come by.
Thank you. I'll see you, I'll see you tomorrow. Be in the office.
I'll be there.
Chad, come back anytime.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate what you've done.
Yeah, the board.
I will pass that along to, the gentleman's name is Donnie Lambeth. He is a representative in, I believe, in Forsyth County. He actually owns a property here in Allegheny County. That's how I struck up the conversation. Just after a conversation, remember this at budget season and, and the school system. I just needed updates on some sports facilities up there.
Friday, moving on down, general business. Quarter cent local options sales tax resolution. It's up on us one more time. It's upon us one more time.
We'll see. We've never tried it at a primary.
Dr. Beasley.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate you guys. Two percent sales tax, we wanna. Anybody have any questions about this? I think we're probably all ready to put it back on the primary ballot. Motion to do so?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve putting the quarter cent sales tax back on the primary, primary ballot.
We got enough time now?
I think so, should be.
Has to be to the elections, seven fifty-nine in the morning, but we have enough time.
Seven fifty-nine? Got a motion to second, any further discussions? Did you, who second? I'll second it. Got a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. I'm on one communications tire project, Mr. Daniel wrote. You've got as good a news as a lice guy. We're good to go.
I think it's pretty good, but it might be hard to live up to forty-seven million dollars.
We may not need to live up to that on this deal.
So, as you guys are well aware, we're moving dispatch, you know, down here and, and part of that project is to construct a radio tower just outside the building to, to link the comm center with the actual towers that are out amongst in the county. And so, we put that out for bid in the form of an RFP. And, you know, I submitted that all over the place, but we only managed to get one bid, but it was a very good bid. And I trust that you folks all have that and have looked over it. I've reviewed it, some of the other folks on the little committee that we had have, have looked over, you know, the specifications that are included here. The tower, from the drawings they've provided, looks like it's more than adequate. I have no doubt in the competency of the people that are gonna be constructing it. It's engineered design, which I was adamant about, that the tower and its foundation be stamped by an engineer. And it actually came in less than the estimates that I expected it to. The total bid amount, excluding sales tax, was eighty-two thousand eighteen dollars and eighteen cents. I'm actually rather pleased with that bid myself. So, it would be my recommendation to the board to accept, to accept that bid and to have the county attorney go ahead and get an agreement drafted up. So, with that said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions, if you've got any.
We have an amateur radio service antenna on here.
There was not one specified in the, in the RFP.
You plan on adding that later or just leaving the ARS antenna off?
Didn't have any inclination to include it.
Okay.
Honest, to be honest with you, I never really gave it a thought, as much as.
Well, the antenna, the amateur radio service during national emergencies, I've relied on them quite a bit in Wilmington during hurricanes and also at Cherry Point. They come in, they set up and they're, if a tower's down, they're going to be there. They provide their equipment, but you do have to have an antenna on the tower, on that. But we can leave it and hopefully run it in at a later date, I don't know how active the ARS is in the county under the, the ham ban, but that was the only thing that came out for me and I will make the motion that we accept the bid, sir.
Motion to accept, right here.
I've got a couple of questions.
Bobby's got a question, we got a motion on the floor, go ahead.
What's our current height that we have for cell towers?
Being the restrictions?
Yeah.
I honestly don't know, that's a planning department question, I don't know the answer to that. I think it's well over seventy foot.
I thought we were over a hundred and, well over a hundred and fifty or something.
Our, this tower's not gonna get anywhere near the thresholds that are, that are in the county ordinance.
I know when we first started, it was, there were low, lower towers and then we amended that to, 'cause a lot of companies couldn't build something that small that would work. So, what's their total height they're asking for?
Seventy foot.
Seventy?
Yeah, and it's basically, it's providing line of sight, if you stand out here in the parking lot, you can see the towers that it's gonna be communicating with. So, it's not that it has to be some gargantuan tower, it, because it has direct line of sight to the next link in the system. And so, the tower that it's gonna communicate with primarily is located up here on Lake Street behind, where the old city limit, up on the hill behind, up there, behind the old city limit tire building. So, and you'll see, if you stand out in the parking lot, you can see it.
Is this a tower that could be used by emergency management, this height of tower, if we needed it?
Well, I mean, I don't understand for what purpose.
If we need it, we're paying, we're paying a lot of money for towers, the county is now. I'm just wondering if this tower would fit into any of these other towers?
This tower is the link to all those other towers.
And did we at one time ask or pass something about towers and being able to use those towers for county emergency if there was space on them at no cost?
I can't really speak to that, it's a planning thing.
I think if, if Drew could read what we passed seven years ago, it might be of interest. Just, you know, that's something we need to look into and I don't know if this has anything to do with, with that or not. But ju, just our overall policy on these towers, I think we need to understand it completely.
And I think, you know, from some of the discussions we've had, that this is a consideration we want to have going forward. But, like, like I think was mentioned, this tower, we've gotta have this one irregardless and it's gonna be its own separate thing from the others in a way. Once we get this done, then we perhaps in the future could explore some of those other options for tower services.
That's all I'll go.
Thank you.
There's a lot more involved with this than meets the eye. Right now, seventy feet gives us line of sight. If you go any higher, because we have an ambulance helicopter pad over at the hospital, then you're gonna have to register the tower with the FCC and the FAA, you are going to have to have lighting on it. Now, as far as the telephone tires and having access on it, all the new cellphone tires are being equipped with the eight-hundred megahertz emergency system and that's where they are providing a service to the county at, at no charge. So, what we've got right here, this is our tire, we own it, we will determine what we do with it.
Any further questions, comments? We got a motion to accept, Michelle is second in the motion, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your hand, five oh.
Thank you.
Go right ahead with the next item, Mayor.
And the next portion of what I've got is that, what I was in here for the last meeting, which was the actual construction of the space down here. And you guys, of course, you know, voted to accept that bid and, and I think, and Ms. Klein there has developed a contract, so I'd like to get that executed tonight, hopefully, and so we can get the ball rolling on that.
Well, hang on, there's one thing that I left blank and that was, you know, if there was gonna be any kind of reduction in the amount you were paying because of over, overtime, you know, and I didn't know if, if the county wanted to add anything to that, you know, if they wanted to use it or not, so that's a question I have, it's a blank. It's on page nineteen, if you'll see number seven for completion time, that's, that's really the only, I, I wasn't sure what to put there, if anything.
It's a recommendation.
With the current supply situation, I don't think anyone can guarantee anything. Not only that, if the fuel cost and everything go, going up, if we're gonna have anything built, we better jump on it now.
When I developed the RFP, sorry to interrupt, I put it, I stipulated in the, in the RFP that I wanted it done by June one. The reason for that is because the grant expires at the end of the fiscal year. Now, it can be extended, but I'd prefer not to do that because that just drags things out and adds more paperwork. So, you know, that was my hope, was that whoever had won this would be able to complete by June one. Now, whether or not you wanna have some ramification for not completing, that's, I'll leave that up to you guys, I don't really have an opinion.
I think sooner the better, control your costs more, for one thing. If you see that happening.
Which that's stated in here, June one, and then the question is whether we wanna try to create some incentive for him to stick to the June one, so that's.
I don't think, I don't think the, the amount of the agreement would justify any type of liquidated damages component just simply because of the magnitude, but I certainly think that you ought to, and I don't, I haven't spoke with him, but I would definitely encourage keeping to that date and. I don't mean this the wrong way, but imposing any liquidated damages on this particular probably won't do you any good, in my estimate. Let's just keep the date, keep the schedule, approve it, send it to him for a look over and signage, get going, that would be my recommendation.
I will say, I spoke to the gentleman in question here one day in another meeting and he's chomping at the bit to get going, so I was.
He was in my office today asking about it.
Pleased with that.
Go.
With that, I guess I would maybe just amend my motion to approve it, striking the penalty for the overage.
Got a motion to approve, striking the penalties, second by John, any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand, five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Daniel. On down, Ms. Abraham, finance officer.
Good evening. Just have a couple of things for finance this evening. The first one is a line item transfer for the jail and the sheriff's department. Just transferring twenty-three thousand dollars from full-time jail salaries to part-time jail salaries. They have been unable to fill all of the full-time positions, so they've had to use more part-time labor. And then the second part of it is from full-time jail salaries, ten thousand dollars to the sheriff's budget, sheriff's department budget for fuel.
Imagine that.
Yeah, you're gonna see a couple of those.
To approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion second, any further discussion? Not all in favor, five oh.
The second one you have is for EMS, from full-time salaries, three thousand dollars to auto expense, which is their fuel line. They are still down one, full-time paramedic as well, so the funds are available. And then from full-time salary, seven thousand dollars go into medical supplies, they've had an increase in the medical supplies.
Your motion?
Moved.
Second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, five oh.
Then we have general fund budget amendment. This is an insurance reimbursement check for some damage that happened at the maintenance building. So, we just need to put the four thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars back in maintenance and repairs for the public works budget.
Got a motion to second, any discussion? Not all in favor, five oh.
And the last thing I have for you is an authorization form from, actually from Truist. This is for our credit card account, it is not attached to our bank account, so, and this is kinda the result of the changeover from BBNT to Truist and getting the correct personnel and the correct titles on this account.
Do you hear a motion?
Moved. Check.
Second.
Third.
Motion. Motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, five oh.
Thank you.
I just have one question, that, enjoy the games on Saturday night?
It's just me.
Never mind.
I had a nice evening watching the game, it just didn't turn out as, as hoped, how's that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is revised rescue squad contract, county manager, Mr. Michael Carter.
Members of the board, on pages twenty-six and seven, you have a revised agreement with Allegheny County Rescue, these are as a result of conversations and discussions previously. Our attorney has put this together, I, I would mention that I think, and she and I spoke briefly before this meeting, I do think that we need to add one additional, maybe a number twelve to the, to the agreement that, and we've talked about this before also, as you recall, a number of our agreements that are in place do not allow for amendments or changes without termination. So, as a, an additional consideration, I would ask that perhaps a number twelve or some number sequence thereabouts, we would add a statement that allows for the agreement to be amended or changed without termination when both parties agree to such changes and that way, we don't have to terminate something and then create a new one and go through that whole event. So, this plus that clause and I'll defer to Heather if there's any other thing.
Make that motion. Motion by Bobby and second by Michelle, any further discussion? Not all in favor, five oh. Thank you, sir. And back to Mr. Carter for the amendment on the agenda.
Chairman, members of the board, we have, I believe I counted four, but the first one is you, I believe you received emails of these for the project on Ninety South Main that is off and running and part of that process is to have a few surveys and studies done. The first one before you tonight is a survey of the property, which is a requirement. And I have McGill Consultants and Associates, they have provided a, a sum of four thousand dollars for the survey. I've looked over it, it's pretty standard, I've also sent it to Ms. Klein, she's reviewed them as well. I think she may have just a clause for each of these as we move forward, which I'll defer to her at this point, but.
I think on everything going forward, we should probably have our audit line, you know, to make sure that that's in there so we don't run into the problems that we've run into before with that being missing from some of our contracts, so. I know they're kinda standard and this is what they use all the time, but that's something that should be added, it could be a, another piece of paper that would just be at the end. I think that would adequately make up for what's required under the statute.
And I would go further to say that that may be something that perhaps we could just create, attach it with it as that, moving forward in all of these instances. So, I would ask the board, consider first, the agreement with McGill for four thousand dollars for the survey of that property.
Moved.
Second. Motion, second by John, any further discussion? Not all in favor, five oh.
The second item is, in addition to a survey, we have to have a. The second item is, in addition to a survey, we have to have a lead-based paint survey of the property as well. So I have had some discussions with a company, their Matrix Health and Safety, they provide this service. They have provided a number for that survey in the amount of $2,100. And I would ask, identifying the same concerns that we identified on the previous, recommend that $2,100 to be executed as well.
Your motion?
Moved.
Motion, second, John, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh.
The next one is an asbestos-containing material survey. And when I mention these surveys, no way, shape, or form am I saying there's any of these materials present. These surveys are done to identify that they are or they are not. We just need to have that for reference. For the asbestos material survey, a price of $3,300, and that is also with Matrix. So I would ask that recommendation as well.
Your motion?
Moved.
Motion, second, Bobby?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five oh.
The last item is, these type of surveys are going to become fairly common, because we are now entering into these projects. I mean, it's very important. And, you know, I received these on Friday. I may receive the next set next Thursday, just when they roll in. So I would like to ask the board to consider allowing me, as the county manager, to enter into these agreements. And I would set a dollar amount on it, and I would just throw out $25,000 as a number to allow for that to occur without having to wait for a board meeting to happen in order to get these approved. And then certainly, if that was the case, I would update you accordingly at that next meeting. But trying to speed the process up and trying to get these things lined up, I would ask for that consideration.
Chairman, I'd make a motion to allow the county manager up to $25,000 to approve these additions or his... By his recommendation, to go through these contracts to speed up everything.
Authorize the contract.
Authorize of that contract.
Got a motion by Bobby, here, second.
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh.
Chairman, I had one other thing that's not an item, it's just information. Me conducting these tonight, that's $1,500 we didn't have to pay to our architect and engineer for implementing those fees. Typically, they charge about a 20% fee when they are involved in these processes.
It's always either talking it out, and it's working out. Moving on down, we have a request for a closed session under General Statute 143-318.11.a/3. Consultant attorney. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor? Five oh.
Slowpoke, are you ready ma'am?
Close enough.
We'll call our meeting back to order, no action taken and closed session. Next on the agenda will be the county manager's comments.
I have a couple today. First one, every now and then I get emails or I get compliments on how the county's operating. And I know we hear a lot about how the county may not be as to some may think, but I just wanted to share that I received an email from someone complimenting our tag-in-tax office the other day and anytime we get those, I think those are positives to put out there. So, wanted to pass along that and let's see. I guess that would be an "add a girl" because I'm not sure that there's a male in that office now, but that'd be a bunch of "add a girls" right there, so appreciate that. The next one on your agenda, you have your February building inspections report, so I would encourage you to look that over. The next one is basically just a brief budget committee update. We have started working on the budget and right off the bat, we identified roughly in the requests that were received, and some of these have been modified now, but the original request was nineteen million eight hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars. And the revenues we identified at the beginning of the process was seventeen-three-seventeen oh thirty-eight. So, day one, we were looking at about a two-and-a-half million dollar deficit between our request and what revenues we've discovered. And I will say that we have started meeting with departments and will continue that. We have a very intense schedule coming up over the month of March. We've already found ways to reduce some of the expenditures and we've identified some enhancements to the revenues, so we are well on our way in doing that. Next item is just basically a brief update on the courthouse roof. I don't know if you rode by and looked up lately. It is now dark. It is now dark as opposed to it was light. The final inspection on the roof has not yet occurred. Unfortunately, the fellow that was going to come and do that last week developed an illness, so we're waiting for him to get over that, but it is the proper color now. I will identify that. So, we're in good shape with that. And I'll end my comments by saying this morning, I signed off and got a confirmation back from the state for their approval on our two hundred thousand dollar capital improvement award. And as a reminder, that is to go towards a generator project for this facility, for the entire facility, including dispatch, and facility improvements to the transfer station. So, well on our way on that as well. That's all I have.
Thanks sir. Mr. Comments. Mr. Mark, start with you.
I would just like to kind of point out, you know, it's a hard way to get on the map, but I think since, really kind of since the earthquake, you know, this county has really been blessed to have a lot of resources coming in to really help us, the local government, and throughout the community. A lot of real needs have really been met. And to hear from Dr. Beasley now, I understand he's got his doctorate's degree and to see this potential, you know, new school at no cost. I mean, it's just, you know, the stuff is really, it's really hard to believe, but I am very grateful to a lot of folks, our representatives who serve at the state and outside the area. I know with the budget office, state office of budget management or whatever their title is, I mean, they have really helped us a lot. And some of these needs, you know, we had them before the, there were needs before the earthquake, and I think a lot of those needs have been met just because, you know, we were seen from the earthquake. And I know it's upset and created a lot of turmoil for folks, but I think there's still some homes or modular homes or whatever up here on the property, I hope to see them set up soon, but it sounds like they're still building and rebuilding homes for folks that are still hit. So, I just, I'm very thankful, and I just, I just hope folks in the community really understand that, you know, so much we can do here with the resources we have, and we've really been blessed by a lot of folks outside this area and the state level, so appreciative of it.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Bobby.
Just a few things. The county manager's inspection report, I know that I've received several phone calls and I know the other commissioner has about the septic tank permitting and the well permitting fees, not the fees so much as the time lag when somebody puts in a permit and when they can inspect. And the best thing I can say is that the time lag is extremely long, and it hurts the county economically, and it hurts these builders and the people that are trying to purchase land for a building, and they can't get a perk test. The health department, I mean, they've done a great job trying to stay ahead of this, but I've heard anywhere from eight to twelve weeks behind. And the one inspector that we have that's here full-time, I mean, he's on the go from daylight till dark almost, and people say, well, hire somebody new, get another inspector. Well, it's a two-year college degree to get started, and then you have almost six months or more as an apprenticeship. So, there's a, it's just not like going out and finding somebody that can run a ruler or dig a hole. You've got to have a big degree to qualify for the job. So, I, you know, I just, I went through this process. I had failed water lines for my septic tank, and it took five weeks, little over four weeks, just to get that permit so somebody could put in three new fill lines. And the big thing is, this week, they could have worked today, but they can't work tomorrow, and it doesn't look like they're going to be able to work Thursday either. And if the ground's too muddy, they can't do a lot of these tests. And I know it's hard for people to say, well, I'm building a, you know, a nice new home or I need a well drilled, but there is a certain process that these people legally have to follow. This isn't a county function, this is a state function. But I think in our budget committee that we need to be working with the health department and see if there's some creative ways that they can maybe steal another inspector from a different county to come in and help. But that's, I think that's a big problem that we need to work on and get solved. The brick sale for the veterans committee is still going. Cutoff date will be July the fifteenth, so there's several of us at the table that have a application, so that needs to get in pretty soon. We're approaching a hundred bricks right now. We'd like to get a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty so we can have those installed by our November date. The, I think Michelle and I are on a recreation committee, and I think now with the budget starting that we need to meet as a committee to see what's going to be happening this summer and long-range plans. So, I would ask for Michael to consider having us meeting fairly soon. And on these towers, if they're, I would like to go back and let Drew find out what the height and all those restrictions we have on the towers, and also look at that little article that she read about, you know, sharing some of the space, and maybe, maybe have that for the budget committee or have that for the mid-month meeting, just sort of a little update on that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bobby. Commissioner John.
Well, finally, Allegheny County gets some good news. You look back and here recently, we've gone through the damdemic, the earthquake, and the financial crisis. We've had nothing but bad news, things, bad things happening, and then finally, we get some good news. The high school without zero input from the county as far as dollars is great. Lord knows we need it. That high school was open the year after I graduated. We were the last graduating class from Sparta High School. So, as rundown and decrepit as I'm getting that building is right up there with it. So, it is nice to be recognized, thanks to the efforts for Dr. Beasley, Commissioner Evans, the going out and reaching and getting that money. The budget committee is meeting, and I don't envy them their job because things are beginning to really pile up right now. One knows what the economy is going to do whenever we go to five and six dollar fuel. Right now, diesel's seven dollars a gallon. That piles on if the groceries that we get off the shelf, they come with a diesel-powered vehicle. The farmers, their fertilizer comes from oil. It is a dangerous time. Ukraine is, it's, to be quite frank with you, it's scary. I'd like to share with you something that I never realized. I served with a gunnery sergeant by the name of Swanick. Later, he retired as a sergeant major Swanick. His parents were in Ukraine at the end of the Second World War. Staline had realized that he could do what we call ethnic cleansing at the end of the Second World War, and he wanted to make sure that the Ukraine became Russian. He exported all of the grain. As they worked in the fields, if they died of starvation, they were buried where they fell. Swanick's parents brought he and later his sisters out, his siblings out, and got to the United States. The Ukrainians will fight until the last woman and child goes. They're on the precipice of a nuclear conflict. This is the greatest danger since the Cuban Missile Crisis. They aren't telling the general public just how bad off we are. To me, this is a time for prayers. Hopefully, cooler heads will prevail. Putin is not going to back off. He will continue his ethnic cleansing, and this is the way he looks at it. Hopefully, it will not go to the final, because it is something, Bobby and I will tell you that it is something that you do not want to see. It is, it's terrible. So, would love to see a prayer meeting from a church in the county. I don't know, speaking of prayers, are we still asking for participations from the Accrumental Council? That's good. Perhaps we could have a prayer meeting over this. Good news, the world's in a sad shape, but it's been in a sad shape before. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Godspeed.
Thanks, sir.
I would like to echo all the sentiments that have been shared tonight, and I would also like to add that I was very pleased to see how many candidates that we had come out for filing, which ended on Friday at noon. So, it's good to see participation in our community of people who want to throw their hat in the ring and try to make our community a better place and to stand up and offer their support. Glad to see that.
Thank you. Just to add the same sentiments, Dr. Beasley and Mark, for his reaching out to his friend, the two and a half million dollars there, and the school system for all their work and hard work they put into this, because lord knows, twelve and a half million dollars for Allegheny County would be a stretch and a half. I'm glad to see this is coming together, and hopefully that grant money will come through, and a big thumbs up to all those folks. And another little bit of good news I seen the other day, Allegheny County for retirement facilities placed sixteenth in the state of North Carolina. So, another bit of good news for the county there. Got the coyote hunt going on.
I'm not sure if there is or what the dates will be. But I know there's talk about the second one.
Maybe going to have another one, and I'd like to see everybody participate in that. Commissioner Bobby, I think he's going to get in on this one.
I've looked at the price of a night scope. I don't think I'm in.
Oh, come on, you're taking out a petty cash.
You can't take that in hurtance, will you? Anyway, that's all I have in the cell tower space. If I agree with Bobby, that's what he's looking into. If we got access, if it's any agreements.
Yeah, if we could just review that cell tower, what our regulations are, or, and I'm curious about this free space that we had, I thought that that was in some of the agreements.
It's in the ordinance.
The ability to co-locate off of those towers. We can find that.
I know the height of the towers was increased tremendously from what it originally was.
That's in the contract. That could be a solution to some of the fire departments, maybe.
Maybe, maybe at our mid-month meeting, we ask Travis to come down and talk about it, because he's most familiar with that.
Being said, that's all I have. Ms. Heather.
I just wanted to give everybody an update on the opioid settlement, so that's still going forward. The issue that we're waiting on right now is that all hundred counties have to sign on to this one settlement with Johnson and Johnson, and additionally, any municipalities with more than ten thousand people. So, that's cities additionally, and I don't remember how many cities have to sign on, and not everybody's signed on yet. So, I did look at the amount that would be, that would come out of that settlement, and it was nine, I think nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, somewhere right around there. So, that's one part of the settlement that they're working on. I know there are two settlements that we've signed on with. I don't know the other one, I haven't received any additional information on that, so it's moving forward. It's just a slow process because you're talking about a lot of people that are involved in that settlement, so it's moving forward. I think they said in one of those, the one for Johnson and Johnson, that that one, they were hoping to be settled by April. I can't remember exactly what the date was, but, so hopefully that'll be the case, and now when the money is paid, that's another story, because obviously they have to have court approval of that settlement, so it's in process.
We don't know what the restrictions are, how it'll be spent yet, do we?
Well, when we signed off on one of those settlements, we did, we signed a contract for that, or just the agreement for it, and in that, we are connected with the facility that provides those services in the county, which would be Daymark, so it would be programs through Daymark for those funds. So, that's obviously a discussion that will come up once the settlement is approved, because we'll have to have then implementation of the programs to utilize those funds. So, that's in the future, it's there, we know we have to work with them, but any additional regulations or, you know, responsibilities we'll have, I'm not a hundred percent sure yet.
I know this is a government deal, but do you have a wild guess as to when it may be settled, that the counties will start receiving a check or?
No, because there's two different ones, and the one they're working on trying to get done imminently. The other one, I just get notices of the litigation as it continues to go on, so hopefully something within the year, you know, before the end of the year, we'll know when monies might come in, exactly how much monies will be there. That's what I'm hoping, because we're getting to that final little bit, so it's not, it's not like we're at the beginning stage again. So, it is getting to the end. Courts are approving things, people are signing off, you know, municipalities and counties are signing off on things, so we're there, it's close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Thing is, I'd just like to comment, we had a good productive working session, good productive meeting tonight, thank everybody involved. That being said, entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor? Be careful going home, it's raining.